With an invocation and a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would you please stand as you are able for the invocation to be led by Reverend Creed Henshaw and the pledge of allegiance which will be led by two of our scouts. So, please stand as we pray.
(Inaudible)
Who fashioned the middle Georgia hills and set the waters of the Oakmullaguita flowing? Who draped the fall line across our county and set the clouds in the sky above us? Who numbered every tree in the primeval forest that once covered our land? Who knows every creature that swims in the river, runs through the woods, flies through the air, or swarms or crawls or burrows? Give us reverence for your creation and inspire us to lovingly care for it. Oh Lord God Almighty, who walked with Adam and Eve, called forth prophets and priests, and set one to reveal the kingdom of God; who led the Native American to build a civilization in this fruitful place; who watched settlers from far away eventually become dominant; who sees this city and county with all its flaws and failures, with all its potential and promise; who counts rich and poor and people of every race and culture as equal before thee? Give us the heart to treasure this city and county as you do, to embrace its history and hope, to work for its betterment. Oh living and active Lord, who weighs the scales of justice and sees through our posturing and hypocrisy; who grieves with those who mourn in El Paso and Dayton, and promises that justice will roll down like mighty waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream; who invites us to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with our Lord. Align Bibb Makin' with your divine eternal love; embolden us to oppose that which is wicked; walk ahead of us like a pillar of fire; encourage us to speak the truth in love; forgive us when we stray, and redeem us to do your will. In your name, immortal, invisible, God only wise, we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please join us on the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, ladies and gentlemen. Our invocation was given tonight by Reverend Creed Henshaw, retired United Methodist Minister. Reverend Henshaw served the congregations across South Georgia for thirty-six years. My goodness, that's amazing. Including four years at Wesley United Methodist Church on Hartley Bridge Road and twelve years at Mulberry Street United Methodist Church on the corner of Mulberry and First Street. He's been a columnist and contributor to Macon Telegraph for over twenty years, oftentimes writing a weekly column. In retirement, he plays golf and racquetball and enjoys two young grandsons who live nearby. He and his wife Bonnie have been married for forty-five years and they have three sons, three grandchildren, and love living in Macon Bibb County. Reverend Henshaw, thank you again for taking time out of your retirement schedule to be with us tonight, and we appreciate your service to us in the past and your being with us tonight. That is absolutely fantastic. Our pledge of allegiance was led by Marissa Henderson. Marissa, where are you? Hey, Marissa Henderson, twelve years old, lives in Macon with her family, attends Howard Middle School. She's in the seventh grade and her favorite subject is English and Language Arts. She's been an active member of Girl Scouts for five years and has earned a Bronze Award. Marissa also enjoys art and has recently joined the sixth-grade beginner band where she plays a tuba. Fantastic, fantastic. As a member of Rima International Ministry's Youth Department, Marissa occasionally volunteers and helps out in her community. Also giving us, leading us in the pledge was Shania Henderson. Shania, where are you? There you go. Shania Henderson lives in Macon with her family, attends Howard Middle School. She's twelve years old. So, if I've got Marissa Henderson and Shania Henderson, both aged twelve, I gather y'all are twins.[344.84][344.84](Laughter). All right, twelve years in the seventh grade. Her favorite subject is science. She enjoys visual and performing arts, recently joined the sixth-grade beginner orchestra where she plays the cello. Shania has been an active member of Girl Scouts, five years, has earned a Bronze Award. She occasionally volunteers and helps her community while serving as a member of Rima International Ministry's Youth Department. Thank you, two girls, for being here with us tonight. We wish you all the success in the world in your future studies and endeavors. We appreciate it. Isn't it great to see there's two such wonderful young people with us tonight? Thank you very much.[383.53][383.53](Applause). Next item on our agenda is approval of previous minutes. We had the minutes of the pre-commission meeting held on July the sixteenth. The regular commission meeting also held on July the sixteenth, and a special called meeting that we held on July the twenty-third. Those meeting minutes have been prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or corrections in any of those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve as submitted? Motion by Slesinger Second by win to approve as submitted. All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We have no special invited guest tonight other than you, ladies and gentlemen. We're delighted that you are here and we welcome you to be here with us tonight as we consider the business of Macon Bibb County. The next item on our agenda are public comments on agenda items. This is a time where we can hear from you before we vote on items that are on the agenda for action tonight. If you signed up for a non-agenda item, you will be recognized and called on later in the program. Janice, these are... goodness.[462.13][462.13](Laughter). It looks like we've got a number of people that have signed up to speak.[468.13][468.13](Audio cut off). A number of you have signed up to speak about Amstar license. I have got about eight or nine people that have signed up for that. If you are one of those eight, nine, or ten people that have signed up to talk about Amstar, each of you could take up to five minutes. But if you're... right, if you're able to kind of piggyback on what somebody else says and abbreviate your comments, we would appreciate it very much. But I'm just going to call on you now in the order in which you're here. Michelle Durin? Michelle, great. Thank you very much for being here, and you're recognized up to five minutes.
Thank you. We promise it'll only take about thirty seconds of your time. My name's Michelle. I think I've met most of you at several times of us trying to vote to pass our liquor license at Amstar. I've been a resident of Bibb County for sixteen years, and I have worked for Southern Theaters who has applied for the beer and wine license for Amstar Cinemas for twenty. My role as Director of Operations is overseeing the daily operations of all eighteen theaters in our chain. Of those sixteen currently either have a full bar or beer and wine that we sell at the theater. I spend seventy percent of my time in the field at the theater. Thirty percent of my time is split between my office here in Macon and New Orleans. So, when I say from experience, I mean experience actually being in the theater, not from behind a desk. All of the concerns that some of the council members have brought up about passing beer and wine, allowing it for sale in a movie theater, are one hundred percent in my experience and, as I testified to when we had the special master meeting, completely unfounded. We've never had any of those incidents. It doesn't change the dynamic of the customer experience. It doesn't cause the guests to get rowdy. The teenagers don't try to buy it. All of your opinions on those matter are just completely unfounded. I would like to say thank you for your time, and I hope the vote swings in our favor. Sorry, I didn't know how to close that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Durin. Next, Marie Childs? Is it... I think it's Mark. No, it's Mark, I'm sorry. That's a C, not an I-E. I beg your pardon, I'm doing my best again. Mark Childs.
Hello, my name's Mark Childs, and I've lived here for twenty years. I've been a customer of the theater.
Get that microphone a little bit closer to your mouth so we can hear.
My name is Mark Childs. I've lived here for twenty years. I've been a customer of the theater for twenty years. I do not, you know, see any problem with the theater getting an alcohol license. I believe entertainment kind of goes hand in hand. I mean, if you go to Disney, you can buy beer. If you go to Six Flags, you can buy beer. I don't think that people are going to the theater to get drunk. I just think that it's an added amenity to the service that people are already utilizing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mark. I appreciate that. Patrick Clifford? Mr. Clifford, you're recognized for up to five minutes. Don't take it if you don't need it, sir.[694.82][694.82](Laughter).
Thank you. My name is Patrick Clifford. I'm a resident of Anderson, South Carolina. I've been in the cinema industry for twenty-eight years. I've managed the Amstar Anderson location since 2007. We've recently, as of December 2017, gotten our beer and wine license out there in Anderson, and we've had zero issues regarding complaints from customers that don't drink, customers that bring in young kids. No complaints, nobody getting drunk, nobody getting escorted out or banned from the building due to drinking. We've had no issues at the Anderson Amstar with beer and wine being sold there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clifford. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your input. Chelsea Parks?
Hey, Ms. Parks, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized to speak.
I'm Chelsea Cox-Parks. I'm a manager at Amstar Macon. Having visited other theater in the company that sells alcohol, I look forward to having those sales implemented at our theater. I believe it can bring a change in the movie-going experience for adults to help create a more relaxed environment for adults who enjoy alcoholic beverages while they're out with friends and loved ones. The experience customers have when visiting our theater should be one they will remember and enjoy with every visit. That in mind, given my own experience in such environment and in efforts to join the modern changes within the theater business as a whole, I believe this change can enhance movie-goer experience and add a sip of showtime fun. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parks. We appreciate you being here. Joshua McConnell? Hey, Mr. McConnell, thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here. You're recognized to speak, sir.
I'm a district operator for a convenience store chain that goes all the way down I-75. And one of the better ideas that I had when I first got the job was to give free coffee to police officers and firefighters. The reason I did that is because we sell alcohol. We sell tobacco. And I want my customers to feel safe, but I don't have a budget that spans tens of thousands of dollars to hire private security. It worked out very well for me. Well, I've been a customer of Amstar for over ten years now, and I live around the corner from there as of about four years ago. And I can say that it gets rowdy in the Walmart parking lot. It gets rowdy in the Kroger parking lot, but it does not get rowdy in the Amstar parking lot. And that's because every single week, they pay tens of thousands of dollars to hire some of the best security that Macon has to offer so that their customers can show up to their location and feel safe bringing their children to go see The Lion King. So, in conclusion, if there's anybody in Macon, Georgia that should be qualified to sell alcohol safely, it's probably the Amstar.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comment. Benjamin Arthur? Thank you for being here, Mr. Arthur. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you for having me. My name's Benjamin Arthur. I'm a shift lead at Amstar. I feel that selling alcohol wouldn't be a problem because we already check IDs for those seeing rated R films, so having another check wouldn't be a hassle. I have confidence in my team that we will follow the correct procedures with no issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. We appreciate your comment, appreciate your brevity. Angie Dykstra? Hey, Ms. Dykstra, you're recognized to speak.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Angie Dykstra. I'm a business owner in the shopping center where the Amstar is located. We've been in business for twelve years. We don't have any problem, don't currently have any problem, don't see anything. We fully support the beer and wine license for them and myself. I'm a mom of five. I frequent the theaters very often, wouldn't mind partaking in maybe a glass of wine one of those visits, so we appreciate, we support it. Thank you.
Very good, Ms. Dykstra. Thank you very much. Trey Ivester? Hey, Mr. Ivester, thank you for your patience. So, you're recognized to speak, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. My name is Trey Ivester. I'm the general manager of the Amstar here in Macon. I've been working for the company for ten years, four of which have been here in Macon. In the last ten years, I've either worked or trained in twelve of the eighteen locations, all of which, well, sixteen of which already sell alcohol and have had zero alcohol-related I believe that the implementation of alcohol sales at my location will not negatively affect the day-to-day movie-going experience, and I'm confident that my team will be able to thoroughly enforce the rules and the procedures that have been put in place by my company and by the local law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivester. We appreciate you being here and thank you very much for your comments. Eric Sparks?
You're recognized to speak, sir. Thank you. My name is Eric Sparks. I have worked at the Amstar Sixteen Movie Theater for the past eleven years. As my first and only job, I have worked in every single position you can at that theater, all the way from usher all the way up to manager. And I have cleaned hundreds of shows, and I have cleaned up hundreds of different alcoholic beverage containers, and I have had only one issue where we've had to kick somebody out for being drunk in a theater out of hundreds of shows over eleven years, and that was people sneaking in beverages. Us being able to sell that, I feel, would curdle that issue. If people are allowed to buy alcohol in the theater, they wouldn't need to sneak it in. But I've seen everything from cheap beer to Jack Daniels being snuck in. So, if we can sell alcohol, I feel that would put a damper on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Appreciate your comments. Connie Hawkins? Thank you for being here. You're recognized to speak.
Thank you for having me. I'm one of the security officers at Amstar, and we don't have no problems with adults coming in, drinking beer or alcohol. Most of the problems that we have with kids, underage kids, we never had a problem with alcohol since I've been there, and I've been there eight years. That's all I want to say.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. We appreciate you being here. Mindy Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Mindy Thompson with Sard and Luff Attorneys. We represent Southern Star LLC with regard to their alcohol license application. That was submitted in December. And as part of the alcohol license application process, as you know, the Sheriff's Office completes an investigation of the application of the applicant and the location itself. The Sheriff's Office, which is also the government agency tasked with the responsibility of supervising these licensed businesses, recommended approval of this application. And as you know, we've had several hearings on this application. One of those hearings, the county attorney, Mr. Drake, commented that the application meets the legal requirements. And as part of this special master hearing that we had, his findings of fact seem, appear to support issuance of this alcohol license. The assistant county attorney, Michael McNeil, has advised that the application is complete and that, in his opinion, the state and county laws require issuance of this license without any conditions. As you've seen tonight, we have several supporters of our application, and we respectfully request that the commission grant our client's license as required by law. And, Mr. Mayor, with the remainder of my time, I'd like to also focus to, point your attention to Item D under New Business, the ordinance to amend Chapter Four of the Code to prohibit cinemas from obtaining or renewing alcoholic beverage licenses, which, if passed, would basically kill our clients' chances at renewing their alcohol license and put Macon behind the times. Our law practice specializes in alcohol regulation throughout the state of Georgia. We represent several movie theaters, not just Amstar. We've gotten licenses in Athens Clark County, Bartow County, City of Morrow, Cobb County, City of Alpharetta, DeKalb County, City of Atlanta, so on and so forth. For these local governments who have even, in fact, passed laws so that their theaters can have this alcohol license, because it isn't an amenity. It's a growing trend within the theater industry, and I believe even Mr. Watkins and Mr. Slesinger in past meetings has even brought that to the commission's attention. Amstar, as we've seen, is a good operator, and passing this new legislation doesn't even give them a chance to prove that they can be a good steward of this license. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Next, a group of people wants to talk to us about the bonus pay and business development and the mayor's veto. All of those are the same things. Mr. Ken Smith, I've got you first. Sir?
Before the gentleman speaks, Mr. Mayor, the last person that spoke referenced Item D in New Business. Can you explain that to her or them, that that's not an item on the agenda for this evening? Maybe they don't understand it, and they just, she's having it, she referenced it. I just wanted to bring it up to you.
Okay. Thank you. Just for clarification, it's on the agenda for referral to committee and will be one of the items discussed next week. Just clarification. Mr. Smith?
Okay. First, I'm Ken Smith, and I don't work for Amstar, so I don't get a salary for them, so I'm not talking for them. All right, look, I want to talk about two things. First, we're losing a lot of good employees in this county. We need to try to save them. Anything we can do to lighten their burden, we need to do it. We've got a lot of people going to leave. Then, y'all know we're behind other counties, we're losing them to everybody. Now, I want to talk about our business development. Before we go outside on business development, that's going to put a hardship on everybody in Macon, Georgia. We're going to have people out of town that are not easily approachable or getting to. I would ask that before y'all consider doing this, y'all would get a committee of contractors, architects, and different people involved in this. You will not be able to go down and see someone. We can call them and get them to come out and look at a different problem. They come, look, we're not going to have that. We're going to slow down this process tremendously, and it's going to cost us a lot more. What we've been paying, we just paid two months for, to get these approved, to get them surveyed for two months, fifty thousand. We were not paying the man who did it all year fifty thousand dollars, and he left us. So, they can't, you can't tell me if it costs fifty thousand for two months, six times, that's three hundred thousand. That's just easy math. We've got to do something to help our city and not hurt our city. He will be, they will be just, we'll be one of a number of cities that they're beholden to. Right now, we've got local people that we need to keep on board, and we need to have somebody we can look in the face when we've got a problem. One lady right here told me, she said, "Mine's tied up, somebody in Alpharetta's got it." Well, we need somebody we can have here, and I just ask y'all, before you do it, that you'd get some contractors. I mean, get CPAs, get anybody you want to, lawyers, get P and Z involved, and they will tell you, this is going to hurt us everyone, and it'll be a long time slowdown. We're trying to make Macon better. We need to stay in town and keep everything where we can get our hands on it quickly. Thank y'all for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Gavin Flanders? Hey, Ms. Flanders, you're recognized to speak, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. First, hats off to you guys for rolling back the miller, Drake. Good job. So, with that being said, I want to talk a little bit about this bonus. In a letter that you had sent out to all employees, me included, you had a statement in there that said, "I know this will cause distrust in the process." Statement from you, Mr. Mayor. The distrust is already there. Been there, been there for a long time, at least since last year's budget cycle. Last year's budget cycle pitted taxpayers against employees. This year, we're pitting employee against employee, saying that, hey, general fund employees shouldn't receive a bonus, or they don't need to pay scale. Not good. We, employees are just asking, let us do our job, let us be compensated fairly for our job, and leave the politics out of our offices. Let us just be employees, no politics. Just me, I ran some numbers on my own, just as a FYI for myself and for you guys. Since eighteen months, we've had six people retire from the Macon Bibb County Fire Department, six. That's expected. You're going to have guys retire. Had fourteen to sixteen terminated or voluntarily terminated. This is where it turns my stomach. Fifty-seven resigned, fifty-seven, nine times the amount of people that are staying and finishing their career, a job that should be a career-long job, not a six-month job, a two-year job, get the training and go up the road to somebody that's going to pay them more. We have to do something about it. The bonus, the thousand dollars, would it have made any of those people stay? I will be safe to say probably not. Will not giving this bonus make people leave? They've probably already made up their mind to leave. However, it is a good faith gesture to say, "We recognize there's a problem. Stick with us. You guys have stuck with us. We're going to stick with you, and we're going to make this happen." Quick, I was fortunate enough to be on the committee for the health and insurance benefits. As of January to May, we saved the city one point two million dollars, on track to save four million total for, but fiscal year. That in itself covers the bonus. It was saved, but it was also saved on the back of the employees because it's insurance savings. We're self-employed. Employees pay that difference. So, employees are doing their part. We're asking you, just do yours. Be smart about this. Say face with your employees. I was asked one time, "How do you eat an elephant?" And the gentleman responded to me, "One bite at a time." How do you fix this employee problem? One small step at a time. We'll stick with you if you'll make a good faith effort for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flanders. We appreciate your comment, appreciate you being here. Mr. Willie Frazier?
Hey, Ms. Frazier, you're recognized to speak, sir. Thank you again, Mayor, for allowing me to speak today. I wasn't going to speak about this one thing, but I just can't let it pass me by. I know that there's a lot of representation here from Amstar, and I like the movie theater at Amstar because I go there, my children go there, and different stuff, but I oppose the idea of alcohol sales, and I'll tell you why. And it's not against Amstar, it's not against all of the good things you had, because I've had good experiences there. And I don't drink at all, but I don't oppose that because of the people that do drink. I understand. My daughter texts me a picture.
Ms. Frazier?
Some months, I got, it's not going to be...
No, address your comments to me, not members of the organization.
I am, I mean, I'm not talking to anybody personally. I just look at people when I'm talking.
Well, address your comments to the chair, please, sir.
Okay, I'm addressing it to the chair.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to stay that way. But the thing is, I want to look at the same folk. When my children come to Amstar and they walk in the bathrooms that they'll throw up in the bathroom, or if somebody that's, you know, not quite inebriated, go in and urinate on the floor, and I send my two- or three-year-old grandson in there to use the bathroom by himself, I want to make sure that you have a maître d' at the door to get that up, or he's astray in that, because I heard that there's no issues, but there's always... But there's always issues with alcohol, because I can go into any pub, and we're opening up a lot of them here, and they're wonderful. You know, I come downtown, and they're wonderful, but I've never been in one where I didn't go in the restroom, and the restroom was messed up, where I didn't go, and there was an issue and different stuff like that, and not even making a big issue while they're, if it is open to them, I'll still understand that. But, right now, you're getting my money and different stuff like that. But if there's alcohol sale in your establishment, then you've lost at least one customer, because I'm going to talk to my children, and I'm going to talk to my grandchildren, and I'm going to let them know that it may not be safe, because what I want each and every one to do is, I want you to be able to come and say the same thing that you said here today. If there is an accident, if there is an incident and different stuff like that, don't disappear at that time. Make the same appearance, because things do happen in our city, no matter where it is, and we need to understand that. On the next case, because I'm going to leave them alone right now, I stand for, of our government here, fire department, police, ambulance, all of them, and I think that we should award them, because just like I said last night, I was here last night as well, is this here. I don't want it to be because of lack of funds, even a thousand dollars, when it comes to them coming to try to save my life in a fire, when it comes to try to save my wife, because I got a sick wife at home that may need breathing. Well, I didn't get paid right this week, so I don't think she's going to make it. You know, one thing about that is, somebody missed an ambulance, and the police had to take a guy that got shot in, over in Green Meadows, and that person died. We need to make it affordable to all of these people in our government, because that's the court line of our government, and that's the court line that holds Macon Bibb up. You're doing all these great things, but we got to handle people in order to keep it going. We need officers for the club, we need a hospital withdrawing people to Macon. We got to take care of them, and we got to take care of that. And I know my five minutes is about gone, so I'm not going to talk about the other couple of things, but my hat is off to every one of you, and if I could take the money out of my own pocket.
Address your comments to me, Mr. Frazier.
I would do it.
Thank you, sir.
And that's to all of the fire department, ambulance, and all of y'all great people that run our government.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
We do love y'all here in Macon.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Appreciate your patience and appreciate your comments. Michael McKeever? Mr. McKeever? Michael McKeever?
[inaudible].
Oh, good. All right, sir.
Um, Mayor, all I wanted to say is, if, if we continue not to give the employees of Macon Bibb County some type of raise or some type of incentive, how, you know, it becomes, how do you expect them, you know, to maintain their household, because household goods continue to go up every day? And even with the raise, you know, goods still go up beyond the amount of inflation. So, it is a good thing to do, to give them, to give them this type of incentive. Also, secondly, we, we continue to operate at a deficit of over a hundred deputies with Macon Bibb kind of sheriff department, and over fifty firefighters with Macon Bibb kind of fire department. And by us continuing to operate at that deficit, that, that, that will, you know, we're going to feel the hurt in our first, you know, with first responders with us continuing to operate at such a deficit. And also, we're, you know, council, commission, and mayor, all on the same team. You can't treat certain members of your team one way. I feel like, you know, a raise should happen, because they're on your team, and you, you all do the, you know, all do the same job to make the Macon Bibb kind of government run. So, by, by it being continued not to give them some type of raise or incentive, it's a slap in the face to your team members, because everybody collectively together, the employees, first responders, run Macon Bibb County, all in a collective effort, from the lowest employee up to the top. That's all I have to say.
Good. Thank you, Mr. McKeever. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. The next item, that's all the people that signed up to talk on an agenda item, so the next item on our agenda, reports from our standing committees, the Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on July 23rd, 2019. The committee heard the finance report from our Director of Finance, Ms. Cristia Lucci. The committee approved an agreement with EMC for the purchase of data protection and data migration services in the amount of two hundred thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cent to be paid from IT's Capital Improvement Fund. The committee approved appropriations of two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred ten dollars from the SPOSS bond proceeds for the acquisition cost and other fees and expenses related to the acquisition of Booker T. Washington Community Center. The committee accepted a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of three hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars with no local match from the juvenile courts. This concludes the Operations and Finance Committee report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next report will be from Economic and Community Development, and I assume Chairman Lucas will give us that report. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on July 23rd, 2019, and we took the following actions. The committee approved the following appointments. These are the mayor's recommendations to our committee, and we endorse these. The appointment of R. Kirby Godsey, Brian Patrick Adams, Walter Timely, Sheila Thurman, and James Patrick Goff. These people were reappointed to the Development Authority of Macon-Bibb County. Dave Dickey, Ella Mae Munfree, and Gloria Lynn Farmer were appointed to the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority. Sheldon Hart was appointed to the Macon-Bibb County Sheriff's Civil Service Board. Jody Palmer, Hazel Hamilton, and Dr. Shawandra Walker were appointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Loretta Thomas was reappointed to the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority, and Bruce Gurwick was appointed to the Macon-Bibb County Land Bank. And I failed to mention the members of this Economic and Community Development Committee, those are Lucas Nguyen, Watkins Schlesinger, and Allen. This concludes that report of the July 23rd, 2019. We also want to report to you that we had a very successful town hall meeting yesterday evening. Many of the folks who are here this evening were there in attendance. We had seven commissioners present. We had items of concern. One was the census and the importance of it. There's information right here on this counter, on the census, and we want everyone to take that information. We have two folks who have been appointed to serve as co-chairs of the Complete Counts Committee, Janice Ross, and the other one is Ms. Peyton.
Carol Peyton.
Carol Peyton, who is the mayor's secretary. And those two ladies will coordinate the activities. We also have opened up space here in City Hall for Ms. Jessica Walden, who is the partnership specialist for the Census Bureau, and will be serving to recruit people. And we also learned from that meeting that there are part-time temporary jobs. There will be five hundred thousand jobs over the United States for people who will be dealing with getting complete, a complete count of all the citizens in the United States of America. This is in the Constitution, it is safe, and under penalty, people are not to divulge any of the information that's given to them as a part of the census. I believe it's arrest, the penalty is arrest, and up to, what, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar fine, so I don't think there'll be too many people that'll be divulging anybody's information. But that shows you how important this is, so please take part in that. In addition to the census, we had an administrative report from Mr. Keith Moffett, very well, well-done, very well-received. Pay and benefits by Mr. Ben Hubbard, our Human Resources Director. And lastly, and most importantly, comments from the public. Many of you were here, and we want to express our appreciation for your attendance and input in this Economic and Community Development Town Hall meeting, and thanks to my fellow commissioners who also attended. Thank you, and that ends our report.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. No report from Public Safety Committee that takes us to Facilities and Engineering, and I think that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July the 23rd, we also met, Facilities and Engineering. We had one main item of discussion that we voted on. The committee approved the development of a new community to be named as Villas at Rivley, so as to allow the developer to establish the development as a private gated residential community. And that concludes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. This is where we normally get to and approve applications for alcohol licenses. There are quite a number of them. I think one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I believe, in total. Each of these license applications was accompanied by the requisite paperwork, that is, the sheriff's certification of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, the certification from the business development services, that the appropriate license fees have been paid for the alcoholic beverages that ought to be sold, certificate from planning and zoning to certify that the zoning is appropriate for the, the facility, a measurement form where our county engineer certifies that the location meets all of the necessary distance requirements and separation requirements from other prohibited structures, and the ad that ran in The Telegraph. So, each of these applications has all of that requisite paperwork. They are, the first one is an application of Pearl Twelve LLC doing business as the Sitgo Food Mart, located at 1681 Rocky Creek Road, and that is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The second one is an application from Oliver's Corner Bistro, located at 496 Second Street. That is an application for liquor mixed drinks to be consumed on the premise, and this is in addition to the beer and wine license they already have, for beer and wine to be consumed on the premise. This is for liquor mixed drinks at that location. Item C is the DAV, Disabled American Veterans Doing Business as the Raymond Williams Chapter Number Fifty of the Disabled American Veterans, located at 4493 Houston Avenue in Macon. That is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine, consumed on the premise at that location. There is a repeat, a license now, that's been under consideration prior, and that is the application of, from BJP Gas and Food Mart LLC, located at 2760 Montpelier Avenue. That is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location, under the condition that certain improvements specified by the sheriff have to be undertaken and completed within thirty days, and there is an affidavit in the record where the applicant has agreed to those conditions. And the next is a new alcohol license application for Southern Star LLC, doing business as Amstar Sixteen, located at 5996 Zebulon Road, Macon, Georgia. That's for beer and wine sales to be consumed on the premise. That, of course, has been the one that went to the, the hearing and had an evidentiary hearing and recommendation or findings back to us on that. Item F is a new alcohol license for the Macon Beer Company LLC, located at 458 Second Street in Macon. That is a malt beverage taproom application. It is for craft beer to be consumed on the premise at that location. And finally, this is a new alcohol license for Great Day in the Morning LLC, doing business as Your Pie, located at 536 Poplar Street in downtown Macon, and that is for beer and wine sales for consumption on the premise at that location to go along with Your Pizza Pie, I guess, that they serve there. The committee of the whole recommends adoption of these licenses. Is there a request that any of these be taken out and voted on separately, or can we go ahead and just vote on them all together?
I request that Item D be separate.
Mr. Watkins, I had you first.
I request that Item D be separate.
That's the 2760 Montpelier? Okay. Is objection to voting on that separate? Okay. Mayor Protem, did you have something?
The desire by the commission was to pull out Items D and E and vote on separately.
Okay.
And he, he just left that out.
Okay. With that, without, without objection, then we'll vote on D and E separate. Commissioner Nguyen, got your light on now.
Was going to ask for E to be voted on separately, but he just did that.
Okay. All right. Then, what we, what we've got now is a motion to vote on Item A, B, C, F, and G. Those licenses, A, B, C, F, and, and G, committee of the whole recommends approval. All in favor of issuance of those licenses, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those licenses will be issued as requested. Next is Item D now. This is the new alcohol license for 2760 Montpelier Avenue, the BJP Gas and Food Mart. This is the one that's issued with conditions set by the sheriff and accepted by the new operator. Committee of the whole recommends approval. All in favor, signify by standing aye. A vote?
No.
Excuse me?
No.
No?
No.
You, you wanted to speak before the vote?
I missed that point, so I made a vote with rights, so I'll tell you why I voted no because now I'm in.
Point of person privilege and just an explanation. Yes, sir. Let me, let me announce, first of all, that we, that we had five votes for and two, two against. So, five to two, the issue, the license will be issued. Now, you can make your comment.
I yield.
What?
I yield.
I'm sorry, say again?
There is not a special.
I, I thought I called for it and didn't, I thought I did.
I think there's been a discussion.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. So, I've got, I've got a motion and, and second, and time for discussion now. So, Commissioner Watkins?
And so, maybe I can convince one of my comrades, but my reason for no, the location is not kept clean, it is not safe. Previously, it has been involved in a Rico case. There's consistent issues of violence. In the last eighteen months, there's been one murder. In the past two months, there've been three victims of gun violence. There've been several instances of hard drugs been found on the location several times, both inside the facility and out. It is a suspected open-air drug market for hard drugs, emphasis on hard drugs. It's previously been cited for the selling of loose cigarettes, which, although petty, is illegal. It's previously lost its right to sell Lotto tickets due to non-compliance with the Georgia Lottery. And again, did not pick up the trash around the business, and it does not conform to the desired community standards. These are my reasons for voting no.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner, is, is there further discussion? Hearing none, then, we assume you're ready to vote. Those in favor of issuance of the license would vote yes. Those that wish to reject it would vote no. So, all in favor of issuing the license, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no.
No.
I think, I think I had, I think I had, yeah, I better get a hand, hand, hand vote at this point. Those, those in, those in favor of issuing the license...
Yes.
Speaker, I feel like we're leaving the weakest.
No, I'm just trying to get his vote. I'm just trying to get his vote.
I apologize.
So that would be five to three, because the votes are the nose, let me say the hands of the nose. One, one, two, three.
Four, four. Vivins is a no. One, two, three, four, five. You have five.
So we have five, but it's five to four. But all we need is five votes for it, so the ayes have it, and the license will be issued with the conditions specified by the sheriff and accepted by the applicant. That brings us then to item E, which is the new alcohol license for Amstar. The committee of the whole recommends approval. Commissioner Wen, got your light on now. I assume you want to talk about Amstar?
Before we vote on it, if you would, please. I know we had a lot of discussion tonight from the audience, and I know that a lot of the comments were about people's opinions. I was elected to represent the people of this community and express their opinions here at these meetings, and that's what I did when I expressed opinions about why I didn't want to have alcohol sales at Amstar. As you stated, some of these opinions may be unfounded, but that was the opinions of the constituents. Without a doubt, I had no one say they wanted to have alcohol sales. So I expressed the opinions of my constituents, no matter how unfounded you may have found them. I just want to say this, that, you know, I also was elected to be a commissioner, be a good steward of your money, and I know that we are all trying to do that. I want to use common sense, good sense, and business sense when I try to make these decisions. And to continue to vote no for this would be like swimming upstream, a very strong flooded upstream, because in the end, we will lose, because we will not have the legal basis to deny this license. They have also said they would file litigation, continue to litigate this, and that could cost upwards of $100,000. Again, I want to be a good steward of your funds as a community. It is not worth it to fight it, and if you don't want to drink the alcohol there, just don't drink it, is all I got to say. But I have to, I have to say that for my constituents, I am not in favor of this, but I am also not in favor of litigation, ongoing litigation that could last months and drag us through this, and then they'll still end up winning.
Thank you, Commissioner Wen. Appreciate those comments. Next, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. I have similar sentiments, and we were elected to represent the people in our district. That's what the public here needs to understand, and most of us represent about 15,000 different people. Of course, we tend to get comments from all over the county that are not in our district, and we get comments from people that are in our district. And, you know, personally, I'm not in favor of alcohol being in the Amstar Theater. I have voted accordingly, but they do meet all the legal requirements, and when they meet all the legal requirements, we can either vote that way or we can, we can have a lawsuit. So I'm in favor of letting Ms. Thompson's firm move on to another client, and I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Allen, got you next, sir.
Thank you. You know, I have been a strong opponent of this. It's right outside my district, and I don't like alcohol. I try to stay away from it, but the law is the law. I think I talked to y'all in here when we had the meeting here, and I told you the law was the law. And the more I thought about it, and the more I thought about it, the sheriff had already okayed it. As long as we follow the law and the law approved it, I have no other way but to vote yes, y'all can have that license.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
Thank you. This is one time that, you know, somebody mentioned there's no point in swimming upstream. Sometimes there is a point in swimming upstream, and I'm going to be swimming today. My vote is going to be no on this because, first of all, a lot of times when we're dealing with issues, we don't receive a lot of comments, a lot of, you know, we have budget hearings and we might have, well, until recently, we only had two or three people who would come and make comments about it. On this one, I got a number of emails. I had phone calls from people who were adamantly opposed to it. And so we said that we were going to vote like our constituents want us to vote, and on this one, I feel very strongly. I applaud anyone who operates a business in Macon Bibb. That's wonderful. But my one vote, if it's my only, if I'm the only one voting no on this, I will maintain what I have said all along, my opposition to this, and on behalf of all those folks who contacted me, took the time to contact me and to ask me to stand for them, I'm going to stand today, and I will vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Mayor Protem, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's past time that we stop playing with these folks' licenses and issue them a license. In good faith, we have issued the little children over at Central Plex that go and see the Disney and the Barney shows. Their parents can drink and issue them tickets. We issued the other little kids over at Penn Strikes and Chuck E. Cheese a license, and just to understand the heartburn. I mean, Kroger sells beer and wine. The other stores in the area sell beer and wine, and so ultimately, the sheriff department is the overseer of our community that will issue citations and regulate such bad behavior. And so I'm trusting him and his department to uphold the law, and I think it's time for us to move forward and put this behind us, and let's go ahead and issue these people these licenses as soon as possible. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Wen, got your light on again?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just one brief comment. I, you know, I said that it could cost, it will be litigated. That's been said, and that will cost us upward of $100,000. I've talked to our attorney. I'd rather spend that money on employees than litigation, so I'll have to vote yes for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Slessen, you got your light on, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to share the experience. I was in Atlanta, this is probably about six months ago or so, and I was visiting friends, and they said, you know, let's go to the movie. We're going to have dinner and a movie, which was a new concept to me. I think it was an AMC. But, you know, we went there, they served beer, they served wine, they served dinner. And, you know, nobody, nobody got drunk, nobody got loud, nobody got out of character, really. And it was really kind of a lovely evening. The movie was Green Book, and I enjoyed it. So I voted for this consistently, you know, from the get-go. I'm going to vote for it again this evening, because it makes sense.
Very good. Thank you very much, Commissioner Slessen. And that's all the people that wish to speak, so I assume we're ready to vote. All those in favor of issuing the license would vote yes. Opposed would vote no. All those in favor of issuing the license signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got two noes. Two, huh? Three? Two noes?
She saw that.
Got two noes, and Commissioner Shepherd?
Commissioner Shepherd, they'd like for you to vote, please.
Abstention is counted as a yes vote.
So seven to two, then the license will be issued as requested. That moves us on then to old business, and the first item of old business is a question of whether or not to override the mayor's veto on July the 24th of the ordinance to approve a supplemental appropriation. Let me ask the clerk to read that by caption first, and then I'll have a comment or two, and then parliamentary procedure.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $2,229,275 from fund balance in the FY '20 budget to fund a one-time pay adjustment in the amount of $1,000 to be paid to Macon Bibb County employees, employed for a minimum of 30 days on the paycheck issued on December the 20th, 2019, and for other lawful purposes.
The measure was adopted six to nothing, as I recall, the vote. I chose to veto that, and I think just a word or two from me would be at least appropriate at this point. I vetoed the measure primarily because it was an unbudgeted expense to a budget that we had just adopted six weeks before in the middle of June. So to come along behind it and have a $2.3 million anticipated budget increase without corresponding revenue adjustments other than to take it out of fund balance, I thought sent the wrong message. Number two, and probably just as important as the wrong message is concerned, is I think this will hamper our ability to adjust the pay of our employees in an appropriate manner. The one-time pay adjustment allocates $1,000 to every employee, whether you've been here for 30 days or 30 years, whether you make $30,000 or $130,000, the bonus is the same. I thought that sent the wrong message as well, but primarily, and I've shared with commissioners, I asked our financial advisor about what this might do and the message, and he provided me with a response that I shared with you prior to the meeting. So for those reasons, I vetoed, not because I don't appreciate employees, not because I don't think you deserve appropriate and adequate pay, but I want to see it done the right way, and I want to see it budgeted and paid for in the appropriate manner. Now, having said that, the parliamentary procedure would be those that wish to override the mayor's veto would vote yes. Those that wish to sustain would vote no, no to overriding the veto. That's the parliamentary inquiry. I have a couple of people wanting to speak. Commissioner Allen, got your light on first, sir.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm the one that brought this supplemental, this ordinance to the resolution to the board, and we've done this before in another venue, I make a motion to override your veto of the ordinance and approving a supplemental appropriation from the fund balance and fiscal year 2020 budget to fund a one-time per adjustment to Macon Bibb County employees. Mr. Mayor, we owe it to our employees.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. I appreciate, I don't think we need a motion. I think this is on the agenda for the vote, so I don't think we need a motion. And second, it's on the agenda for... Commissioner Watkins, I've got you next, sir.
And I, I guess I wanted to speak towards, briefly towards, the letter from Terminus. We made reference to the fact that, I think you asked them, was the $10 million in fund balance enough, and looked like the public finance analyst was only expecting us to put $6 million in. So again, we are operating at a surplus of $10 million, which is still $4 million more than what we were anticipating when we were asked by all of the analysts. Is one point I would like to make. Secondly, I think Commissioner Allen makes a fundamental point. Our employees, and very common, are in deserve, are either in deserve of it or is necessary. I believe the lowest paid employee working for us now makes $23,000 a year, which I understand to be about $12 an hour, which is considered below the living wage for a working adult. That $23,000 number has been stagnant since consolidation, and I believe that affects maybe 230 of our, 200-ish of our employees that are right on that $23,000 number. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, you have the floor, sir.
And I understand your desire to create a new pay scale at some point in the future. And I guess it strikes me as a false dilemma, one of the arguments that was made yesterday, that is either we implement a pay scale or we fund this bonus. And I call it a false dilemma, just using, if your pay scale were to create a scenario where employees, the employee was eligible for $5,000 worth of pay scale adjustment, if at that time we had implemented this $1,000, we would only owe him an extra $4,000. Or if we hadn't made this, we would owe them a $5,000, but the math would be the same for that individual. So I don't, I don't understand that false dilemma. And again, it's, once you conclude your pay scale, I think we're all somewhat, even without the pay scale, that most of our employees are below the regional average or whatever metric we would use that we are underpaying our staff. So an adjustment upward now or later would help make...
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Commissioner Jones, got your light on, sir?
The, the pace, I don't think we need a pay scale. We had a pay scale before. We don't need to spend $160,000, $170,000 on a new pay scale study. We didn't implement it before because we didn't have the money. I would like to make a friendly amendment that this reads full-time employees.
Can't do that.
Why not?
At this point, we're at the veto, override, so you can't, you can't go back and amend it.
We have seasonal employees.
Right. We've got a lot of questions, but this isn't the time to, right, to try to amend that.
I hear you. Well, I'm in favor of overriding the veto.
Okay.
For many reasons, and we don't need to waste $160,000, $170,000 on a new pay scale study. We need to do what we can, and this is, this is one small step, but it's a beginning, so we need to do this.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Mayor Protem, got your light on, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I started paying attention to government possibly back in 1999, and back then, under the old city, you always would have Macon Police, Sheriff Department, and it was counter, say, versus the Fire Department. Who job is more dangerous? Who job is more important? Used to be the argument, and in today's society, some people kind of still bring that up. Who job is more important? I think everybody in the city would say their job is just as important as anybody. You would take Public Works. If you ran your car into a pothole and busted a tire, couldn't get to work, Public Works would say, my job is important. You want me to come out late at night, early in the morning to fix the pothole? Let the trash pile up for a week or two, and let the solid waste forget somebody's trash. Citizens would immediately say they need their trash picked up, and therefore, solid waste would say, you know, our job is very important. If we don't pick up people's trash, it becomes a hazard. IT department, systems go down and we can't print checks. Everybody would say IT is very important. You can't pick checks. So I guess my point is, I don't think we pit one against the other. Everybody's job is important, is what I'm saying. And so I've gone back and forth with commissioners, trying to get us as a commission to agree altogether, whether we're going to sustain the veto, override the veto, and we don't have a consensus. I will say that in talking to many commissioners, and even you, Mr. And so I've gone back and forth with commissioners, trying to get us, as a commission, to agree altogether, whether we're going to sustain the veto, override the veto, and we don't have a consensus. I will say that, in talking to many commissioners, and even you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that if we implemented the pay scale, I would like to see that $2 million go toward that amount of money to implement it. It hadn't happened since 2015. Nobody has faith in that particular system. Some people would say, give it to me right now. They want it now. We no longer trust you guys. But I would tell you that most people, it's kind of 50/50. When you really go in detail and talk to employees, 50% of the folks understand that they may end up in a higher tax bracket, they may end up paying more taxes. Others kind of feel like, you know, that doesn't benefit me. Give me my $1,000 now and let me just take my chances. I want to do what's right for the citizens. And as hard as it may be to override the veto, would seem at this time the thing to do. I would really prefer if we, and the reason why some of us were saying, well, let's sustain the veto, because we could then go back and then put that money aside and not do a study, because I agree, we don't need a study. I think we just need to put the money in there and just pay people. But I think people are frustrated. They want to see some results. They want to see some actions now. I will say that I'm willing to override the veto, but I'm not going to continue to get out here and fight for OLOS and all of this that will resolve all of our issues, because we're looking at, everybody seems to be looking at what's happening in 2020, as opposed to what's happening right now. Right now, overall, if we listen to our expert, Matthew Erickson, he's saying, don't do it. Well, doing budget hearings, Matthew Erick, Matthew, is it Eric? Matthew?
Aaron.
Yeah. He said, he suggested we raise the millage rate. If we raised the millage rate, we would, we could take care of all of this. If we implemented an OLOS, we could accumulate $26 to $28 million that would resolve all our issues. We've got school board members constantly coming here, watching us, posting things about what we do, going to Atlanta, following us, saying, don't support an OLOS, talking to certain commissioners, don't support an OLOS. But now, guess what? They gave all their folks over at the Department of Education a raise, and then now they put an ELOS on the ballot to pay for it in November of next year. And so the delegation didn't have to make that decision for them, and all we were asking is, let the voters decide on an OLOS and to get the $26 to $28 million, and let's resolve all of these issues. Let's roll back people's taxes. Let's give a public safety adjustment, a cost of living, and to all our regular employees. So here we are, stuck with this, and it's not a popular decision either way. But I would just suggest that at this time, all of us try at least come together this evening, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, and let's go ahead and override the veto, and let's move forward and try once again, and meet with our delegation, and explain to them all the things that we've done correctly to improve our process, and let's get this OLOS in place, to take care of our employees like we should, and all of our property owners like we should, and let's try to just stay together as a commission. Let's try to stay together and come out here and show the public that we're going to work together for the best of them. And I think tonight, we can start there, if we just go ahead together and just override the veto, and let's go back and work with you and your administration. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, May Protan. Commissioner, Commissioner Wynn, got your light on?
Yes, sir. Some of the comments that Commissioner Tillman made are valid and have merit, and we should, going forward, think about doing what he said, working together to make things better. Right now, the point is, do we want to override this veto and give our employees a $1,000 pay adjustment for one time? And yes, we should. It's just a thank you note. I said a goodwill thing yesterday, but it's a thank you note for what you've done and what we haven't been able to do for you for a couple of years. So I think we just need to go on and override this veto and go forward from there and work on the merits Commissioner Tillman was talking about.
No other lights on, no further discussion. I assume you're ready to vote. Those wish to override the veto would vote yes. Those that wish to sustain the veto would vote no. Excuse me? Oh, roll call, roll call vote, very good. Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote? Commissioner Wynn votes yes. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Bibbins?
Yes, override.
Commissioner Bibbins votes yes. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Watkins? Votes, oh, Commissioner Shepherd, I'm sorry, I jumped over Shepherd. Commissioner Shepherd?
I'll vote with the mayor.
Got a no vote, got a no vote there. Commissioner Watkins? That's a no vote to sustain the mayor's veto. That's a yes. May Protan?
Yes.
That's a yes. Eight to one, the mayor's veto is overridden, and the ordinance will be effective. All right. Moving on now, item B is a series of appointments to the economic, I'm sorry, a series of appointments to, let's take just a minute or two. Y'all leave quietly, please, if you don't mind. Leave quietly, please. We're going to try to keep doing business. We're going to try to keep doing business, please. All right. Next item is a series of appointments to the Development Authority of Bibb County. It's not Macon-Bibb County, it's just the Development Authority of Bibb County, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission reappointing R. Kirby Godsey, Brian Patrick Adams, Walter Timely, Shilla M. Thurman, and James Patrick Goff to the Development Authority of Bibb County for an additional term of four years and for other purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, I just, we were very happy to approve your nominations for these positions, but I just want to remind everybody that entities like the Development Authority handle an awful lot. They handle millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars on our behalf. And so I'm going to start requesting that we get the agendas and the minutes of each and every one of these different authorities. There's the Development Authority, there's the Urban Development Authority, there's the Industrial Authority, there's the, what else? We've got Macon Transit Authority. We've got just various and sundry departments or these authorities that we have in place that are handling functions and monies on behalf of Macon-Bibb, and I think we just need to know more about what's going on. This authority right here has handled loans to millions of dollars in loans to public and private entities, some private schools, some, I believe, they were the ones that handled the monies for the, originally for AD4. Didn't they provide the funding out there that we ended up having to take over? Maybe they were the entity that took it over, but anyway, they handle a lot of money, and we need to know about it. So I'm going to be making that request, that we start to receive the agendas of their meeting, as well as the minutes of their meeting, so at least we're aware of what they're doing on our behalf.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item D, it's an appointment to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission appointing Dave Dickey, Ella M. Murfree, and Gloria Lynn Farmer to the Macon-Bibb County Transit Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item D, it's an appointment to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to confirm Mayor Robert A. B. Rickards' appointment of Sheldon Hart to the Bibb County Civil Service Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment to the Urban Development Authority, or reappointment to the Urban Development Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to reappoint Loretta Thomas to serve as a member of the Macon-Bibb County Urban Development Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item F is an appointment to the Land Bank Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appoint Bruce Gerwig to the Macon-Bibb County Land Bank Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize the administration of a RFP for Business Development Services to outsource that and get proposals back, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon-Bibb County Administration to issue a solicitation for the purpose of evaluating the feasibility and cost associated with contracting out all functions of the Permits Division of the Business Development Services Department to a private vendor, subject to the caveats contained herein, to transfer the function of the Licensing Division of the Business Development Services Department to the Office of the Tax Commissioner and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Bibbins? Got your light on, sir.
Well, affirmative vote tonight means that there's going to be information brought back to us where the decision could be made then.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's correct. All this is, is to issue the RFP and get proposals back for evaluation. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item H is next, and it is a contract for data protection services from IT Capital Improvements Fund. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with EMC Corporation in the amount of $2,000,000 for the purpose of a data protection appliance and professional data migration services to be paid from IT's Capital Improvement Fund, computers and hardware line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate funds for the acquisition of the Booker T. Washington Center and related expenses, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to $240,710 from SPOS bond proceeds or revenues from the 2018 Parks and Recreation Booker T. Washington Community Center line item to provide funding for the acquisition cost and other fees and expenses related to the purchase of the Booker T. Washington Community Center property, consisting of 1.87 acres, located at 401 Monroe Street and 1479 Jefferson Street, to authorize the mayor to take any and all action to purchase a Booker T. Washington Community Center property for its appraised value of $131,000 and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item J, which is to accept a juvenile justice incentive grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a juvenile justice incentive grant from the State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $393,955 with no local match, awarded to the Macon Judicial Circuit Juvenile Court in substantially the same form as the heretofore attached Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution with a committee amendment about a private gated community, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and accepting plans for the development of a new community to be named as Villas at Rivoli, so as to allow the developer thereof to establish said development as a private gated residential community and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? One item here, I think that the amendment was to require that the language, that this is a private sewer system, had to be in the deed, and I trust that amendment is in the version that we passed.
It is.
Good, okay. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution as amended is adopted. Item L is the transfer of a very small parcel of land adjacent to the old Macon Baptist Association property, to transfer that to the Urban Development Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to transfer 0.035 acres adjoining the Macon Baptist Association property located at 1080 Second Street to the Urban Development Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on, and I bet you I can answer your question.
Yeah, I think you can, for the third time.
That's right.
Just wanted to make mention of the fact that there will be some funds generated from this transfer of property, this sale, and that the majority of those funds will come back to Macon-Bibb. Is that...
That is my understanding, and I think that's the understanding of the county attorney. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That is, that's good. That needs to be the trend in not only that, but we need to reconsider the parking as well, so that when we get to a point where all of the expenses are taken care of, all of the parking meters and everything else is paid, all that's paid for, then all of that additional revenue needs to start coming back to Macon-Bibb, or we'll reach a time when our revenues will be so limited, and we will have given away so many of the functions of government. That's just me talking. But I'm glad to see that we will receive the majority of the proceeds from this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item M was withdrawn and will be referred to committee. That's the adjustment to the timeline. We'll adjust that, I mean, refer that to the committee. That brings us now to new business, and there are several items of new business that have been prepared by our county attorney's office and sent down. They include, first, a resolution to approve a purchase and sales agreement with Great Southern Recreation LLC for splash pad equipment for the South Macon-Bibb Recreation Center in the amount of $191,663.88 to be paid from SPOS bond funds and/or SPOS bond proceeds. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of extension with the House... with the Houston County Board of Health, WIC program, W I C, WIC program, uh, for the lease of office space located at four fifty-six Oglethorpe Street in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars for one year. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is item C, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Compliance Point Incorporated for data, security, auditing services in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars to be paid from the FY nineteen IT Budget Capital Improvements Computers and Hardware Line Item. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item D is an ordinance to amend the code to prohibit cinemas from obtaining, uh, or renewing, uh, alcohol, uh, beverage licenses. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, next, item E, uh, is a resolution to request the Health Care and Retirement Benefits Committee to assist in assessing and making recommendations to the Macon Bibb County Commission related to the overall job categorization and compensation packages of all Macon Bibb County employees in parallel with any study conducted by the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole as well. Uh, item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Smallwood Rentals, Stewart, Stewart and Associates Incorporated for the provision of architectural, engineering, and design services in preparation for the renovation of the Macon City Auditorium and in, I'm sorry, in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus eight percent of the cost of the renovations payable from SPOSS bond proceeds or SPOSS revenues. I'm referring that to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, item G is a resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to declare its support of locally established building design standards for residential dwellings. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Uh, item H is a resolution, uh, to authorize the mayor execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for three offender work details from Dooley State Prison at a cost of one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars payable out of Public Works Department budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item I is a similar resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for seven offender work details from McKeever Probation Detention at a cost of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars payable out of department budget. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with NFP Corporation for brokerage and consulting services, administration, and communication with respect to employee benefit programs to be paid by the Health Care Fund. I'm gonna refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, that's all the new business that has been prepared, uh, at this point. Uh, but additional items may very well be formulated and passed and, and come down from the attorney's office during the balance of this week. I would urge you to check the agenda, which is published by the clerk on Friday afternoons that will include all items that are being referred to the committees, uh, for a further study and evaluation. Next Tuesday, uh, the thirteenth, I believe that is, the thirteenth, um, beginning at nine o'clock in the morning, Tuesday, nine o'clock in the morning, the thirteenth of August, uh, for the committees, uh, to meet, beginning at nine o'clock. Uh, that brings us now to, I think, the final agenda item that we have, which is public comments on non-agenda items. And, and we have, we have two folks that have, uh, signed up, uh, to talk to us. One is Cleopatra Simpson that wants to talk to us, um, about, uh, education. Ms. Simpson?
How are you?
Uh, we're fine. Come, come right up. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
All right, thank you. Hello. Mayor, Commissioners, Macon Bibb. Okay, this is about education. This is what I want to recommend, parents. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna recommend that you pull your students out of the Bibb County school system and home educate your children. There are some questions I want you to ask yourself. Number one, ask yourself this question, can my child be this miseducated accidentally? Number two, how is it that my child does so well the whole school year, but he doesn't pass the end of the year test? Number three, okay, what's my child even given a test? Number four, did my child pass the test and I was just told he didn't? Number five, was the test even in English? If you don't get to see a test that was given to your child, how do you know your child was even given a test? And secondly, if your child's not gonna pass something and you're still not gonna see it? And let me just say this to the educators and stuff. I think you, the educators really want to educate. I think you went into this business because you want to do it, but I think the bureaucracy and stuff is preventing you from doing the job that you want to do. And, um, and right now I'm in the process of trying to get, get, uh, something going to get rid of the end of the year test and get rid of the core courses and stuff that... Now, from my research, the State of Georgia was giving four hundred million dollars to implement Core. I haven't seen the benefits of it. A lot of the students don't like, I've heard a lot of education don't like Core. But four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to, to be brought, well, not brought, to be given, you know, it give you incentive and stuff. So I'm gonna recap since I have a few more minutes. Number one, can my child be this miseducated accidentally? Accidentally or on purpose, there's still a problem here, but the method you would use to resolve this would be different if your child is not... I don't understand. Can you actually be this miseducated accidentally? How? Okay, and then with number two, uh, you know, I, I work with children all, all the time. These children are doing good in the schools and everything, but then at the end of the year, they don't pass the test. So, and ask yourself this question, parents, is my child actually being tested on the material that he's, that he learned during the year? I think that's what the test supposed to be. So how's your child doing so well during the year, but you don't pass the test? And, um, did my child pass the test and he was just told he wasn't? You don't notice, if you don't get in there, become a part of your child educate, I would say pull him out. But if that's unrealistic, parents, become an active part of your, form a co-op. And I got some information on my website, on my Facebook page, Beneath the Crust, B-E-N-E-A-T-H-T-H-E-C-R-U-S-T, Beneath the Crust, on Facebook, where we can discuss this. How do we get rid of this test? That doesn't seem to be any good. If you can pass, if your child can pass during the school year, but can't pass the test, something is wrong, parents. And, uh, thank you all. I'm, I'm gonna end with this same question. Ask yourself this question, parents, is it possible for my child to be this miseducated accidentally? Mayor, Commissioners, Macon Bibb, thank you. I'm Cleopatra, an angry black woman.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Uh, my only suggestion might be you make these same comments to the Board of Education at their, uh, regular meeting.
Oh, uh, you know what? They only give me three minutes. I write to them, they don't write back and stuff.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm, okay. Well, we, we appreciate you being here. Yes, ma'am, we appreciate you being here. Uh, uh, finally, Mr. Donald Richardson wants to share some grassroots reflections with us. Mr. Richardson, always good to see you, sir, and good to see you getting around so well. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
The Proverbs, chapter one, "The Proverbs of Solomon, the son of David king of Israel." And my commentator, commentator, commentator is Francis Bacon, The New Atlantis. Uh, "About twenty years after the ascension of our Savior, it came to pass that there was seen by the people of Renfusa, a city upon the eastern coast of our island within night. The night was cloudy and calm as it might be some mile into the sea. A great pillar of light, not sharp, but in the form of a column or cylinder, rising from the sea a great way up towards heaven. And on the top of it was seen a large cross of light, more bright and resplendent than the body of the pillar, upon which so strange and spectacle the people of the city gathered apace together upon the sands to wander. And so I had to put themselves in a number of small boats to go nearer to this marvelous light. But when the boats were come within about sixty yards of the pillar, they found themselves all bound and could go no further, yet so as they might move to go about, but might not approach nearer. So as the boats stood all in a theater, beholding this light as an heavenly sign, it so fell out that there was in one of the boats one of the wise men of the society of Solomon's house, which house of college, my good brethren, is the very eye of this kingdom, who having awhile attentively and devoutly viewed and contemplated this pillar and cross, fell down upon his knees and then raised himself upon his knees and lifted up his hands to heaven and made prayers in this manner. Lord God of heaven and earth, thou is vouchsafed for thy grace to those of our order, to know thy works of creation and the secrets of them, and to discern as far as appertained to the generations of men between divine miracles, works of nature, works of art, and impostures and illusions of all sorts. I do here acknowledge and testify before this people that the things which we now see before our eyes is thy finger and a true miracle. And for as much as we learn in our books that thou never workest miracles but to a divine and excellent end for the laws of nature of thy own laws, and thou exceedst them not but upon the great cause, we most humbly beseech thee to prosper this great sign and to give us the interpretation and use of it in mercy, which thou dost in some part secretly promise by sending it unto us. When we had made his prayer, he presently found the boat he was in movable and unbound, whereas all the rest remained still fast. Taking that for an assurance of leave to approach, he caused the boat to be softly and with silence row toward the pillar. But before he came near it, the pillar and cross of light break up and cast itself abroad as it were in a firmament of many stars, which also vanished soon after, and there was nothing left but seen but a small ark, or chest of cedar dry and not wet, at all with water, though it swam. And in the fore end of it, which was towards him, grew a small green branch of palm. And when the wise man had taken it with all reverence into his book, it opened up itself and there was found in it a book and a letter, both written in a fine parchment and wrapped in sinons of linen. The book contained all the canonical books of the Old and New Testament, according as you have them. For we know well what the churches with you receive in the apostles itself, and some other books in the New Testament, which were not at that time written, were nevertheless in the book and for the letter it was in these words. I, Bartholomew, a servant to the highest and apostle of Jesus Christ, was warned by an angel that appeared to me in a vision of glory that I should commit this ark to the floods of the sea. Therefore I do testify and declare unto the people where God shall ordain this ark to come to land, that in the good days is come unto them salvation and peace and goodwill from the Father and our Lord Jesus Christ."
Mr. Richardson, thank you. We appreciate you reading those, uh, grassroots reflections for us this evening. Always good to see you, sir.
You're welcome.
That's all the people that have signed up, uh, to be heard. No points of personal privilege. Ma'am?
Sorry, the reason I waited for everybody to be in the room is I'm not, um, we just didn't allow me to change my...
Uh, with, with, without, without objection? But, without objection, please, yeah, but...
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to, I don't want to get...
Pull that microphone down and so that we can hear you.
Yes, uh, ma- mayor, um...
And state, state your name and, and an address so we can get back in touch with you.
My name is, uh, Irma Shute and I live in eighteen forty-nine College Street. I wanna comment on one of the new agendas, the one that's called Local Building Standards for Single and Double Family Residence. I also wanna say that I sent an email to all of you, um, honorable commissioners and also to you, mayor, regarding this matter. I wanna voice my subtle opposition. I don't know if I'm mistaken, but I, I want you to please hear me before you sign the preamble, because I thought, I saw you, you prepared to sign the preamble and you're preparing to support it. I have serious concerns, um, that the proposed local building standards can be potentially used or abused to harass and disenfranchise small landowners like me to favor the agenda of, uh, large developers and corporations near their properties. Um, for example, um, these local, uh, regulations can be manipulated by developers and, uh, big corporations to criticize their neighbor's property alleging that it does not fit the local standard that they have cooked up to promote their business. In reality, there's nothing wrong, uh, with their neighbor's house or property. Uh, what they truly want is to remove that homeowner in order to steal his or her land. Um, I believe that here in Macon, as in most counties, we already have two building standards that govern us all. We have the zoning board as well as the state regulations. Uh, the policies of these two, uh, are more than enough and sufficient to keep, to keep us all in check. Um, the, the zoning board tells us what is appropriate and inappropriate building. Uh, they approve, they disapprove, um, the development, uh, businesses that we propose. So I cannot understand why, uh, the High Office of the Mayor or the county officials would wanna duplicate those functions, you know? Um, why, why would we need a third standard, you know? Um, I cannot think of any reason why, um, but, uh, those first two standards, the zoning board and the state regulations, um, cannot be manipulated. I, but I'm worried about local self-made standards that can be, you know, um, manipulated, um, in order to advance, uh, the agendas of, uh, several corporations and, uh, big, big entities and then, uh, little people like us will be thrown under the bus. Uh, this is my main, main concern. Um, every landowner, big or small, um, has the capability to contribute in developing Macon, just like those other big developers and, uh, community partners in Macon that we know. Even a single landowner like me can also forward an economically feasible project, you know, that, uh, would help or might help Bibb County. And my concern is, uh, if I forward that, uh, development, uh, project, if I suggest it, you know, for you to consider, I'm afraid that, uh, because of the so-called local, uh, regulations that, uh, some powerful people would cook up, they would block, uh, the development I'm proposing, you know, because especially if it would, uh, interfere with their agenda. Um, I just want to remind all of you, uh, in, uh, your important, uh, functions and powerful positions that everyone, that opportunity to develop and contribute to Macon economically and develop should be distributed to, to all of us, including, uh, small landowners like myself. Um, there's also a comment there where, um, Honorable Mayor, you said, um, it's, uh, state legislation, you know, eliminating locally tailored approaches to design standards would harm self-determination. I respectfully disagree with that. Um, I feel, I've always felt that state laws are put in place to guard the rights and interests of, uh, small citizens like myself, because state laws apply uniformly to all of us without targeting anyone. It is the only refuge of small citizens like me from any potential local government abuse. Um, the state prohibits building these so-called local standards that you're proposing because they have been used before in other places to oppress local county citizens. So that's my, uh, that's what I'm trying to say. I, I apologize for my tone. I respect all of you. I love all of you. Thank you for everything that you do. I sent this, um, this, this same email to all of you, hoping you would think about it first before you vote on it. Or if you do vote on it in the end, pl- please don't throw somebody like me under the bus someday when I propose something.
All right. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your comments and your patience. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you, Lindon.